Good evening and welcome to the Town of Irving Select Board meeting for Monday, March tenth, two thousand and twenty five. We're calling this meeting to order at six thirty six P M. I would like to make a motion to nominate Scott Bastarash as Chair of the meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Mr. Chair.
And just for clarity, I'll only do on this temporarily until our chair shows up. He's running late. There's only a couple of items on the agenda that we can discuss before our seven o'clock joint meeting, so we'll see if we can get through those. The first is the review and approval of Senior Services Director position description and the search materials. Thank you, Brian, for allowing us one extra week to see these again as a, as a final read before we approve them. I read through them. I don't have any additional concerns. I think it captured everything. I didn't see anything as far as, you know, all the renumbering worked and everything was there. I didn't see any typos that I could catch. The content was fine.
Did I capture the changes that you all wanted in the scope of, of services or, excuse me, the statement of duties and the essential functions?
As far as I'm concerned, yes.
Okay.
Certainly seemed to. I only had one minor comment and it's not a sort I'm willing to die on or delay this, but on page one, under judgment, it says work requires the employee. I just recommend we change employee to director so it's consistent throughout. That's easy enough. Other than that, I have no other recommendations.
Be good with that one amendment. I'll make a motion to approve the position description for the Director of Senior Services as amended effective three ten twenty five.
Yeah, I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We're gonna skip the next two as they're part of the joint meeting. Meeting minutes, I did not see them.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure can.
On the senior services, there was a position profile?
Oh, that's right. Yes, thank you.
And I did make some revisions from the first time you saw it, three weeks ago at this point?
Yes.
Again, I think when we, I read through it, didn't have any additional concerns with it.
Okay.
I think my comment was less is more, you know, on the description. I think, you know, some other members were feeling the same way. We didn't want to get into the weeds on, on this one. This is more of an overview and
Right.
they can prompt to ask questions if they have more follow-up that's needed. So I'm happy with the way it is.
Okay.
I think it flows.
I am also happy and I will make a motion to approve the Director of Senior Services Community and Position Profile document effective March tenth, two thousand and twenty five.
I will second that. And if there's no further discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So with that document, I proposed a due date of Tuesday, April eighth.
Yep.
Yes.
No concerns with that?
Nope.
Okay. We'll get it out this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving down the line. Did I miss the minutes or did I not? They're not?
We held off on meeting minutes. Bets is working on it.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I didn't see him in there and there was no number associated with it, so.
Correct.
Review and approval of professional services proposal with the FERCOG for hazard mitigation plan. That's down towards the.
I think it's page thirty nine.
Yeah. After the annual.
The only question I had on this was the proposal had a not to exceed number of twenty thousand dollars and the community planning office requested twenty five thousand in funding?
Correct.
So is it a not to exceed? And is that contingency or?
So, so the initial, you never know exactly what you're gonna get through this process because we have to satisfy MEMA's requirements. FEMA gets involved. There can be some back and forth. There was also a question of whether or not FERCOG could offer the service to us. They did their plan back in two thousand and seventeen?
Sounds about right. Somewhere in there.
So part of the delay to get to this point was going back and forth with FERCOG and they to MEMA to see if they could do this work for us. They finally got that permission about four weeks ago. And then they were able to refine what they believe the cost would be. So they came back to us and they think it's going to be just under the twenty thousand, but not to exceed twenty was something they felt like they could commit to because they will submit this, assuming we follow the plan and you all approve it, they will submit this in the fall. There will be that iterative back and forth process between MEMA and FEMA. The goal is to have this finalized by December, so depending on that cost, we will still, we have an appropriation of twenty five, so we will still have sufficient funds left in that account if something unforeseen occurs.
We just force a conversation at the table here. If it goes above the twenty, we have to authorize the additional five.
Correct. The nice thing about this, the voters having appropriated the funds, we don't have to wait for grant funds. All the other towns whose plans are expiring this year, who are waiting for the grant funds, will apply this year and in theory here next year. So their plans will already have expired. So I indicated that we would forego that grant fund right now to get our plan back in, in good standing.
I have no other questions or concerns with it.
All right, nor do I. I'll make a motion to engage the Frankman Regional Council of Government for Professional Planning Services to update Irving's local hazard mitigation plan and to authorize Jacob Smith, the Select Board Chair, to execute all necessary agreements.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Last but not least, scroll down to it here. Some memo here. It's related to establishing a street opening regulation. We have discussed it a couple of different times, but we don't have any, any structure behind it other than a concept.
You have a concept, you have application forms and
But we have no bylaw. We have no
Bolated.
policy and procedure. There's nothing else related to it.
No. You do have the bylaw regarding dragways and curb cuts. It doesn't really speak to the, the specifics for trenching.
I was gonna say going beyond that and having to trench out into a road and.
Right. Right. So we've just been following the application process. And a previous select board had authorized the highway superintendent to facilitate that process. But I think, you know, the, the conversations that you all had last year really highlighted the need to be a little more clear about what the expectations are, what the requirements are, what the timelines look like. I think liability insurance and things of that nature came up, especially when you're talking about trenching into or around our utilities, open trenches for multiple days. So we found some examples from other peer communities that we could use as a, as a foundation for draft to present to you all for consideration if you were interested in this. And my recommendation would be if you wanted to go down this road, we would also fulfill that goal that you all have of, of updating the wastewater and in, in water regs, excuse me, at the same time. There's a lot of similarities into how you do that work. So this was a great probably moment to do all three topics at the same time.
I have no concerns if, if the highway superintendent and yourself, because I'm sure you'll work in tandem on this one, have the bandwidth to take it on and, you know, start gathering that information.
That's okay.
I think so. I'd like to see it be a little bit more firm. I like the approach of having not just a policy and procedure, but going to a bylaw. I think something that is as important as how we cut open streets and, you know, there's bigger things at play than having it change on a whim without a lot of input. So I'm in favor of moving forward with some regulations that are tied to a bylaw.
Okay.
If you and Glenn have the bandwidth, I would appreciate the effort.
Okay. We'll get working on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe everything else we have on here is going to be part of our seven P M joint meeting.
Correct.
Well, with that said, I'm gonna make a motion to recess and reconvene at seven P M with the start of our joint meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome back to the Select Board Meeting. We will resume at 7:01 PM and I will call the joint meeting to order with the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee. Review of our FY '26 operating and capital budget requests and proposed plan and then followed by the ATM review on the draft we have. So, I was there. So, do you want to hear the recommended capital request first or do you want to take a look at like kind of where does everybody want to start at any opinion or preference? Or where is most convenient for you in terms of order of things?
To me?
Yeah, I mean, you've got to keep track of it.
I think it'd be helpful to make sure that the capital plan is understood.
Okay.
Make sure there's agreement on that.
That's fine.
And sort of build that into the budget or into the ATM line.
And then maybe we take a look at revenues and take a look at all the adjustment questions that are open.
Sure.
Okay.
Ryan, if I could go down this way.
Especially if I'm going to put you on the spot. So, Ben, do you want to run us through that?
I've got a little three-page list here that I can go through. Let's see here. Police Department, cruiser replacement, $70,000 from capital stabilization account. From the wastewater department. Hatch lab equipment, $11,106 from the wastewater enterprise fund. The SCADA computer replacement for $26,100 from the wastewater enterprise fund. From the water department, the Neptune 360 software and R900 belt clip transceiver for $13,680.23 from the enterprise fund. From the fire department, replacement fire apparatus. This is a total of $900,000 and we're proposing $450,000 against fiscal year 2026 and $450,000 against fiscal year 2027. Capital best strategy to place a deposit at time of order and pay remaining balance upon delivery as Chief previously outlined. We'll continue to work with Chief as to what exact amount would be for each payment. And for our thoughts, we just went with a 50-50 split. There may be a better way to split it out, but 50-50 is just the easiest. Under IT, computer replacements, $35,000 from capital stabilization. Cemetery commissioners, SEM sites, cemetery software, $20,000 from capital stabilization. And the cemetery expansion, this was a roughly $1.5 million ask, but we're only taking $200,000 for 2026 with $1.3 million roughly for 2027. Irving Elementary School, blinds for $50,000 from capital stabilization. OPM designer feasibility study, probable cost roof project, $200,000. Capital stabilization recommending this with the understanding the SBA program will still be pursued under general government. Flooring replacement for the senior center and fire station number two, $36,000 from capital stabilization. The complete streets for church and north streets for $49,900. Church and north, chapter 90. Licensing software, $28,000 from capital stabilization. Under general government, $28,000 for licensing software recommended. Okay, so that's what that was. I'm sorry about that. And we had some deferred projects as well. Wastewater, POTW number one, AMP tunnel was defined by AMP as needing repair. Request was provided as a placeholder, making us aware much more information would need to have accurate costs and scope of work. We'll work with PEC to determine the best way to get the AMP identified projects into long-term capital plan. Underwater, trailer for $12,500. After discussing, committee felt that the projects, there were other projects that were higher ranking. The Neptune T10 pro coder meter, $84,115.80. After discussion, committee felt that these could be worked into a maintenance budget on the operating side and continue to be swapped out gradually as the department has been doing. Under highway, phase two for Bridge Street, Maple Street, $109,000. $65,000 sourced from leftover funds from phase one. We'll need balance of $44,000 in the future. This would be, this would be work that would be done if the culvert project in full moved forward. Updates will be provided and will reconsider in the future as needed. IT security upgrades, $300,000. IT has asked that this request be deferred until 2027. Recreation, removal of water tower, $240,000. Open space committee will be adding this to a survey question in the next couple of months. Would like to see the result before moving forward. Would also need to receive an updated cost estimates before making recommendations. Zelinski Park upgrades, there was no funding for this request. More of a placeholder request deferred to 2027. Veterans Park, $1 million. There was no funding request at this time. More of a placeholder request deferred to 2027. And lastly, in progress, requests that have been updated for senior housing. Care Drive infrastructure improvements, $2,353,000. This is an ongoing request scanning several fiscal years. Applying and sourcing grant funding is currently in progress.
Questions, comments, thoughts, concerns?
I'll just throw it out there because I'm realizing deferred might be a little confusing because we had this conversation. When we're saying deferred to FY '27 means departments will have to resubmit. It doesn't mean that we've approved it and we're just moving it a year. It just means that it will be looked at again next year.
Is there kind of a total of two, three different places it's coming from and where there's money to come from, some's capital improvement, some's not, some's enterprise or just a few totals or?
I did a quick total of the ones coming out of, most of them are coming out of capital stabilization. There's a couple of them out of wastewater enterprise and one out of water.
Chapter 90.
One chapter 90, which I left off because that's in a class of its own. The fire truck, the 450, did I hear that right? It was out of capital. So that puts it at $1,089,800 out of cap stabilization.
But also with the caveat that the $450,000 is a placeholder. It could be less. And the $200,000 for the cemetery is also a placeholder that could be less.
Correct. And if that 450 placeholder is less, it just means that we'll have to plan for more in '27. It's just going to be which one, you know? So if we needed to balance it and plan for the future, we could.
And how much is in cap stabilization?
That I don't have off the top.
So 1.2 million? Is it something like that?
As of June 30, I'm on the wrong page. As of June 30, you had $1,236,000.
That should be on the next page, on the financial cap sheet there.
Yep.
Just a couple of comments to make sure it's clear. I know capital reviewed it so that we are, but the SEM sites was just a sample software. So it would be just software. We'd have to go to procurement. It's not necessarily that vendor. And the Neptune, I'm not sure that's the right item. It's specifically of the multiple requests for that that came from water. It's the meters that we would move over time and the water meters at connections. The handheld and the software upgrade needed would be the request that was put through. So just, just in case that nomenclature's not correct. I don't know if it is or not. But whatever it is exactly.
You might have took that right off of his submitted capital request, but yes, it is the meters.
You might have. I might not know either. I just wanted to make sure it was clear what that was. And then the borrowing, the cemetery is like a placeholder as being a borrowing authorization in the future.
Yep.
For the balance, not expected to be funded from capital funding on hand.
Could I just comment for the, for the thousands of people that are watching us, or hundreds or tens who are watching, that it could be somebody new who doesn't quite understand the process that at a town meeting, we vote money into this capital stabilization fund because we know there are going to be roofs and fire trucks and whatever things, big ticket items that are coming along. We have a committee that looks at them, tries to rationally look at what do we need? What can we do without? What can we move a little bit later? And not just us, the capital planning committee telling them, but working with department that's what, you know, what can be delayed, what do we need? So we've got enough to fund the things that are proposed now and we'll put more in to fund things that are proposed later. It's a good process instead of just everybody shows up and say, all of a sudden, we need a $5 million this or a $2 million that and what are we going to scramble to get the money? It's a very orderly process and I'm not on the capital planning committee, but I applaud you for doing what you do. So it's a joint effort, so thank you.
Any other capital questions? Maybe just tying that to a deposit too, Ben. It'll be, well, go ahead.
I think I was at the same spot as you and it was about.
It depletes the majority of it.
Yes, go ahead, finish your thought and I'll jump in.
Okay. I was just going to say, Ben, if you want to maybe illustrate what the thought process is for the deposit side of it because obviously it's not just a draw, you know, what we want to do there.
Yeah, I don't think we actually came up with the dollar value that we're thinking of at this point. Well, what money we want to put into the capital stabilization account going forward, right? Did we come up with a dollar value?
I thought we did.
I didn't recall that we did, but I could be wrong. All free cash. Okay. All free cash.
Maybe, maybe the number was loosely discussed.
I was thinking a dollar value, but all free cash works for me.
The formula was very clear.
There we go.
If that's what you all wanted to do, I would structure the article to transfer what was certified free cash and that balances $1,069,189.
Say that one more time, the number?
$1,069,189.
Almost the same number.
Yeah.
And that was not intentional. We came up to that after.
No, and I'm glad you brought that up because that was going to be my question about if we're going to deplete all but about 3% of the current balance, knowing that we're, you know, splitting a couple of these larger pieces where we're looking to do potentially another 450 and another 200. We need to make sure we have capacity to push those out for a multi-year and still fill them. So thank you. That answered the question.
And just as something that Deb reiterated earlier, because when we spoke about it, we talked about things we wanted to defer. And there's a difference between deferring for later discussion about and deferring to we're not doing it this year, we're doing it next year. And we just wanted to make the difference between the two. There are certain things that have to be deferred to next year.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, the difference.
We can't buy half of it this year and half of it in five years.
Yeah, but I was going to say even the differentiation that you were trying to make, Deb, is, you know, deferring something is we're not going to make a decision one way or the other. We're not doing it this year, we're deferring it to next year. And the converse is, in theory, we're approving it, we're postponing it until next year because for funding reasons, we want to push it out for another year. Postpone, need not reapply, you know, just automatic. I'm assuming that's sort of the thought behind it that if it's something you stand behind, we don't have to make them go through the process again. But if it's one that didn't get the full vetting of, you know, the finance committee or capital planning committee or anybody to make a recommendation, they should reapply again next year.
Deferred sounds better.
Deferred does sound better.
Postponed almost sounds like it wasn't analyzed.
Either way, yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Either way.
No determination, resubmit in the future year.
Is there an acronym for that?
I don't know, but we could probably come up with one.
I did have one.
Appropriate or not, I'm not so sure.
So for this current year, and I guess this is a discussion for years beyond this, is I don't know, we've had I don't know, we've had discuss, discussion the last two years. And this year it worked out in our favor where we have a substantial amount of free cash, but that may not be the case going forward. And I would hate to see that be the only mechanism for how we populate capital stabilization. You know, so to make sure, and I think there was a note, Brian, you had on one of them saying, should we sort of put a number in there that is this annual recurring that's adjusted as needed based on the recommendations from, you know, capital planning committee and FinCom and the select board to adjust up or down as needed year by year. But some sort of placeholder of whatever number that would get you to augment whatever we can't put in from free cash. You know, two fifty, three hundred, four, whatever the number is, I have no idea.
We talked about that during our meeting, but we really hadn't come up with a, a number yet. And it wasn't like a X amount of dollars. It was more a percentage. I think the one, the two that we discussed were three percent and five percent. I think three percent is too low.
Of the annual operating? Okay, all right. So, yeah, that same conversation. I don't have the number either. I just am glad to hear that that conversation was happening because, you know, while it's great that the available free cash this year did work out in the favor that we can replenish all, all plus a little bit more. I can't foresee that being the year, year in, year out ability.
It's nice to like be able to lay a ceiling on top of it too, right?
Yeah.
We can spend up to this point. If we go above there, we're robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
Yep. Okay, well, that answered two of my questions.
Nice.
We are meeting again this week on Thursday, so we might have a better answer for you next week on that.
A potential number, yeah.
What we're looking at there.
I, I do, I didn't even think of doing it as a percentage. I kind of like that methodology. Because it just means that as our budget increases, the availability of putting more into stabilization also increases. Instead of flatlining and having to decide. Interesting.
I think the other thing was the cap, which has been discussed many times, but also it's probably more complicated than that. Like the fire truck's been deferred for multiple years. But now that you're outlaying it, it's not a normal, like a more manageable size project. So maybe certain things are kind of, you might have saved up for and excluded from what the cap is on an ongoing basis. Because it's a, a different or a larger, there's some other criteria.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, so. The anomalies that pop up that you have to account for.
You know, even if we're allocating money towards, you know, the library is an example. Normally, we're not going to have that outlay in full, but if some of it, we might, so. The question came up last time, if we allocated any last year, any RNA last year to the capital stabilization. Did we find that out?
I believe we did not.
I didn't think we did either.
Okay, I, I think it was fully free cash because we've been struggling, just to your, your comment to get back since that money was moved out.
It was all.
Okay. And the reason I say I believe you're right is we talked about that on town floor and it was, you know, it's not smart to pull that out of, and it's not RNA. So to move that in, somebody had made the recommendation to move it into operating. I'm like, well, that's free cash. We don't want to. Yeah, operate on, rely on that. You can't rely on that for operating. You rely on it for when you can buy those expenditures, you know, those capital things, one-time fees. But I don't want to put it in there for operating.
I do know once we start seeing all the numbers start shaking out, if we can commit the free cash plus a percentage this year, that would be ideal. Because then, I mean, free cash basically, whether we pull it from stabilization or we authorize it to go right to the projects, that's a wash for, for capital this year. And so that way, if we could then begin to build that back up by starting that percentage, and maybe this year it is a percentage of three percent. And then next year we move it back up to, you know, to five or six. Or one of the things that I'm going to try and do before Thursday, when capital meets, is just go back through a couple of the past warrants and see ideally, how much are we appropriating every year for capital? How have we done in the last, you know, three to five years? And what has our overall budget been for those years and just kind of figure out what percentage we're currently doing? I know last time I ran the numbers, we were upwards of about a million dollars a year for capital on average.
You know, I was wondering if you, you know, just something to contemplate is setting a, a protocol for like a sliding scale, you know, with a, say between you just threw out numbers of three to six. Working within that range, but using the factors of what other projects we see in the next one to three to five years that would need that? And how aggressive do we have to get? Or have things slowed down and we have more time to slow it down? Or the demand of the RNA budget requires that we don't put in as much this year? So we have, we can drop it down to the minimum of three percent, whatever those numbers are. But sort of giving yourself that window of sort of fall within the window. And if we can get super aggressive certain years because we need to, let's pick a number that's high if we have the capacity and, and, you know, the budget can withstand it. Especially if you know the forecast for, you know, future years is going to be expensive. Use it. And then obviously, when you're balancing it, if you've got to drop it by half a percent or something to balance, start having those conversations.
Anything else for now on capital? And obviously we may have to revisit as we get through the balancing everything, but.
Yeah.
No?
Do you want me to hold off from starting to populate the capital articles? Or is it okay to take this initial draft and start to work that in as placeholders in the, in the morning?
I think you could start working it in. And you can always change the numbers or take them out, but.
It's all draft at this point.
If it's more work for you to delete them or change the numbers later, then no, but if not, then go for it.
Okay.
I'd like to see what it's looking like and how it's morphing.
Okay. You mean in the warrant language?
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Not necessarily in the dollar table, but.
Sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're gonna have it in the numbers quicker.
Yeah.
Obviously. Okay. Well, it was a great overview. Thank you of the capital for now and we'll keep revisiting that. The budget revenue sources sheet, I know we got it in at least one of the last meetings, but I haven't really had a chance to, to walk through it. So we'll take a look at that. And I know a few things are still work in progress and we're still, you know, developing certain things. So, so these are placeholders in some cases, but you know, prior year plus our two and a half, we have no anticipated new growth at this time.
Not that the assessors have felt comfortable projecting in terms of budgeting with it.
So that brings our RNA limit to estimated at thirteen million, eighty-four dollars, eighty-four thousand, two dollars, sorry. Placeholder for two hundred thousand into overlay. I'll come back to that in a second. State charges, these are like a second round or these final receipts and charges?
Those are the governors.
They're the governors, right? So we still have a little while.
Ways and Means and Senate Ways and Means are going to be doing their conference committee. I haven't received an update that those have been issued yet.
Okay, so they're preliminary still.
Correct.
And then the four hundred and twenty thousand as local estimated receipts projection. I know that was a topic last year. Is that, what is that based on currently?
Largely that's based on motor vehicle excise, collections and investment income as well as local permits, forfeitures, things of that nature. I was trying to be conservative with that, though I do think you could potentially increase that. I know that the treasurer was able to secure for you all a interest agreement for, it was a twelve-month period and that ends this month. So it's been a full year.
I was just gonna ask, that number's built on the previous?
I know, I assumed it, I, I assume that we can't secure that again. I don't know if we can or not. That's obviously for her to negotiate. But I assume that that's not possible and we'll be back to the market as, as it is. So I, again, conservatively went back in the other direction.
So let me rephrase that because I think that, thank you for what's in it. How did you come to the number? Was it projected by those who have the big pieces or was it based on last year and?
Review of FY twenty-four's actuals and FY twenty-five's projected. Assuming a reduction in this investment income.
Right.
But again, there's still, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that go into this. There's probably a little more room there, but I wanted to start in a conservative position. And, and we can refine that number if you, if you feel like we need to.
We don't have last years in here, do we?
Last year's what?
Same revenue, the same sheet, just for a year-over-year, we should probably, I would like to see it in there to see what last years were. Like where we landed when we went to town meeting with the plan.
Oh, your actuals, the actual details out of the, out of the financial records, they're all in the tax rate recap in the DLS gateway.
Right.
So I can export all to you.
Right, but this one, for example, for FY twenty-five isn't done yet, local receipts.
Right, but you have our projections.
What did we, yeah, that's what I meant. Like, but what did we budget for? Not what's in the recap because they're not necessarily the same. Right? Remember, like what this said in March or April last year when we went, when we set budget, went to town meeting? This same sheet, we had a number that we worked with and that was our plan. And I'm just saying, what's that comparison? And then it'd be great for the things that are done and finalized, what those say too, you know, in comparison. Again, not, not tonight, just things that'll, at least for me, I don't know if that helps everybody.
Okay.
To kind of get some sense on what are we trending, what are the trends doing? Are we estimating conservat, like what we're asking you to explain to us partly is, is this conservative from last year? Is this, you know, is it aggressive versus last year versus the actuals, so? And then our free cash, which was certified, so we have that number of the million, sixty-nine thousand, one eighty-nine. Circling back to the overlay, so we did, as some know, have decisions on some of the appellate tax cases. We won't talk about like strategy and then where are the towns going with those, as a result of those decisions? But just in terms of there is some number that we now know that we potentially have liability to pay with interest and ensuring, or at least being thoughtful about what should we be putting an overlay based on? Where we are today, regardless of the strategy forward, on when or if or how those may be paid, so. I don't know the current number in overlay and probably would be good to get a updated number from the assessors on maybe projecting forward to June thirty, just for the sake of it, of what the total price tag will be with accumulated interest. So we have an idea and the current overlay, you know, balance, and then we can figure out kind of what is that? And, and if they have a recommendation on what should be, they think should be put in for this year based on that. Two hundred is kind of our general placeholder. I know we've fluctuated it over recent years, up or down, but I believe the net number is slight, there's a slight deficit right now, though, right? Last we knew, is that right? From kind of what the determination was and the balance, I think it was, it was pretty close, but it's at least not a lot of excess right now.
Correct. Yes, sir.
If it's helpful, at our meeting last year, March twentieth, our estimated receipts was plugged in at two hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Didn't we bring that up though? Wasn't that the one that we were? I feel like that's the one we adjusted to get to balanced budget because we.
It is.
Knew the new interest rate.
Interest rate, yeah. It started at two forty.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's helpful, but I think that's.
No.
It was a lower number.
Keep digging.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on the revenue side? Of the general fund?
I don't think so. It's pretty straightforward so far.
I think diving into what free cash is made up of is, is one that we'll want to go back to. Wastewater Enterprise, the retained earnings is just over one million dollars, one million, four thousand, five oh two. The budgeted and estimated receipts are still in progress there. Same with Water Enterprise, retained earnings there is one thirty-eight, nine ninety-two. Both of these, I believe Water Enterprise, I'm not sure if it's been trending down, but I think it has over years. I know wastewater's trended down. It probably was at one point five at the high point that I, while I've been sitting at any table. Because a lot of the capital comes from there, but we don't necessarily raise an appropriate addition later back funding that. So something that I brought up to capital last time, that we had talked about, looking at an enterprise fund within those stabilizations. Looking at a capital stabilization within those enterprise funds, pardon me. So another item that we'll probably talk about this week in more detail. PEG access is at one thirty-six, oh sixteen, as of June thirty. The free cash and the enterprise funds were as of February sixth this year. The estimated receipts on the PEG access is fourteen, seven fifty, so estimated one fifty. And then our trust fund, trust funds is a funny name for those.
Right.
Trust funds, the general stabilization and these balances are all as of June thirty last year. Eleven million, eight eighty-eight, and three oh two. Capital stabilization, as we said, one million, two thirty-six, two fifty-two. OPEB is at six million, eight sixty-seven, nine fifty-two. Cemetery Perpetual Care at thirty-five thousand, eight fifty. Conservation Funds just under ten thousand. Post-war Rehab Fund at twenty-eight, one fifty-one, and Opioid Settlement Fund at fifty thousand, four ninety-one. What is the post-war rehab fund scope for?
I don't have that with me tonight, but I can get it.
Okay.
Yeah. It's been on the books for quite some time and it hasn't been used in my time here, so.
I am sure it's been in our list. It just didn't really catch my, I, I don't recall talking about it either.
In the past, I haven't listed it there and I don't know why. So this year I added it.
Do we ever put funds into it?
No.
And we've never taken funds out of it, I assume?
This has just been accruing its interest for.
Okay.
Well, as long as Brian's been here, he hasn't taken money out of it.
Sure, okay.
My belief is that it's tied to the monuments.
That was my thought too.
But I, I don't know that for sure. That, that was just my assumption.
I, I think it would be good with any that we're not sure about, is just understanding the, the bounds of what it's used for.
Absolutely.
And what it's for.
I'm assuming that that would have been filed with Bartholomew when the fund was set up. So if for some reason I can't find it in-house, I can always reach out to them to, to find the documentation to open the fund.
Okay. So all in all, those trust funds, twenty million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, six ninety-seven. So albeit they have different purposes and doesn't mean they're all available. That's pretty healthy for, especially for a counter-sized. Any questions on revenue and budget sources?
Not necessarily a question, but we had kind of an interesting conversation at the capital planning meeting last week. Brian had brought up the question of the stabilization, stabilization accounts, so the general, the capital. We know what their purposes are, but do we cap them? Do we, how much do we want to have in them? You know, general stabilization always kind of floats around eleven, twelve million dollars. Is, were, when they were originally established, was it done so with a plan that once it hit X amount of dollars, we don't put funding into it any longer? Are we just funding them to fund them and to fund them? Are we trying to have a certain percentage or dollar amount in there? I think at least for FinCom and capital, kind of understanding the purposes of those and the goals particularly would be helpful.
It's, it's not written anywhere. There is no, there is no language on that. But I know in conversation, we've talked about it, I have talked about it in the past, that I always looked at the general stabilization fund as a means to ensure that we have viability should something ever happen with our tax base. And we have, you know, the goal, my goal was always to look at that is, do we have one year of operating in there? Whatever that, you know, looks like or, or enough where we could function while we figure out how to move forward should something happen to our tax base that changes it drastically. When we got to around the eleven or twelve million, that was a few years ago and that was one year then. It's obviously grown since then and the stabilization has not grown at the same rate as our annual operating budget. And I'm not sure we could actually match that in growth and put it in there. But that was one conversation, you know, what, what it, what its purpose could be. Offset any drastic change and raise and appropriate to ensure that we could figure out a long-term solution should something ever change to our income.
long-term solution should something ever change to our income.
That's exactly as I recall, memory's not perfect, but I would say early nineteen eighties. There was, there was no capital planning stabilization, it was just stabilization, and it was kind of used by finance to fund whatever was upcoming almost immediately, and there was never quite enough in there to buy, you know, the truck tires or whatever they needed. So it was just stabilization, one time it was like fifty thousand dollars, apparently nothing. And it was brought up at that time, I recall this, brought it up, if the tax base changes drastically, we should be putting some of this aside, enough to cover our year's budget if we need to, roughly. So you have time, a buffer of time to figure out, what do you do if the tax base drastically changes? And so we, as you say, it hasn't quite kept up with the inflation of our budget, but we're in much better shape than most places are. But as for a limit, I don't know, I, I don't know that there, that there was one set, not that I'm aware of. It's not just grubbing up a bunch of money so you can have a pile of gold, it's just someday if something hits a fan, you want to have, have it contributed to enough to take care of things.
Yeah, and I think to Deb's point, if, if we can come up with some language that does give that direction, I, I've, I've heard that question posed. You know, why are we putting this in there? Are we just saving it just so we can hoard it? You know, what's the purpose? So that, you know, it'd be great to have a, a long-range plan of, here is the purpose. And while it may not be the same purpose that was, you know, given in nineteen eighty when it was, you know, formed, things change, it's twenty twenty-five, and, you know, going forward, the vision of how we plan on using it and what the purposes of those accounts.
Maybe we can review your financial reserves policy? You had drafted that five or six years ago?
Yeah, I was gonna say even longer.
Like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Was it nineteen?
It was soon after the capital planning committee was established, and that was twenty seventeen, so?
Okay.
But it may make sense
Yeah.
To review that and look at that through a new lens.
I, I think the Department of Rivingdo does set a cap on how much someone can, each town can have.
It used to.
I was gonna say, used to, a few years ago, they changed that.
Okay.
They lifted that.
Lifted altogether?
Yeah.
But they're, yeah, you're correct, there was always a cap.
There must be some recommendations out there, too, whether from the state or from, you know, quasi, like, VerCog or someone on what a reserve, recommended reserve policies for municipalities in terms of like what, what to have in those types of accounts, I would think. There's some guidance out there, or some, if not, some best practices from other communities that might have the opportunity and ability to grow it like we have and, and see where they are, you know? Of a different scale, but just the idea, and if they use percentages, then it's more transferable, hopefully, so?
I think Brian's point to revisit that would make sense, and I think having it in writing would also make sense, because there will come a time when there are other people sitting in all of these chairs, and having that historical basis to refer back to, they might decide to do something totally different. But if that is the direction we're going in for that one-year operating, I would be very careful about putting a cap on it, because that, with inflation and just the cost of everything, it's not going down. So we'd factor that in as well, and?
So it was twenty, April twenty nineteen, we adopted it last, if I'm reading the most current version. It talks about a minimum general stabilization of fifty percent of operating, but it doesn't talk anything about the top. But it does talk about capital, of having sufficient to cover ten-year capital anticipated needs, which I'm sure is anticipated deposits and withdrawals in ten years with the model and what's in the balance.
Yeah, oh yeah, we could put the whole balance
That'd be ten million dollars.
Right, yeah. Well, I'm reading that going, that's more than general stabilization.
Right.
But that's the in and out over the ten years, expected to cover, you know, the ins should cover the outs. But it also said it should minimally equate to the total annual asset depreciation the town accountant calculates in our CASB statement thirty-four. Do you know what that is? Or could you get that for us at some point?
It's in our, it's in our annual financial, yes.
Yeah, so if you could pull that, I'm just curious what that would say, what that would even? I don't know, ten million, two million, million and a half? Would, does it give us any indication as you're talking about what we're trying to do? Another indicator.
Well, you're taking notes, can that policy be sent to all of us again?
Of course. I'll send it to you right now.
Oh, I figured one of you would email it within the next thirty seconds.
He's already got it up.
I do, it's, I just pulled it off the website, it was very quick and easy to find.
Yeah, financial policies right there.
I just Googled financial reserve policy, it was a first, or not Googled it, I searched it in the website, so it was very quick and now it's gonna take a second to download, but? And then retained earnings actually has one in there, too, which I forgot, we talked about that one, which is that the sewer and water enterprise funds would maintain a reserve at two hundred percent of their operating budget at a minimum. But maybe significantly higher. We are at not quite, or probably around one hundred percent on Waste Water, if we're lucky.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Probably around, but we're right there, and then I, Water, I want to say we're probably about half, sixty percent? I mean, we'll know when we get through those, but I can't remember if it's a little over a hundred or
Operating budget's just under a hundred.
Okay, so it's about a hundred percent on both, so we're, we've got room there.
But we're considering, if you all decide to and the voters approve it, creating a capital stabilization fund for each of those enterprises. So the policy's referring to retained earnings, the goal would be to transfer into the respective stabilization funds, those balances, so?
Then we need to update our policy at that point to incorporate that fact, because it wouldn't be an addition, I wouldn't expect something.
Right, right.
Just, just something to, you know? It's a good thing to refresh, it's not very long, and so, just as we're talking about it, I'll send it. Okay. Other things on that, obviously the reserve policy will come up. Again? Do, uh, do you have the details on the free cash sources and all of that?
We provided that
More, but more granular than omnibus.
We provided that to the auditors, I will send that off to all of you.
Okay.
Largely, it was due to staff vacancies through most town departments. So either late hiring into the fiscal year, or some positions remained open most of the year. Some of those have since now been filled, so we don't expect those to be recurring sources, but it's all listed out.
But that'll be good to know, as we're going through these, too, to come back and go, it's not a surplus that we would anticipate seeing recur, or it was unspent by a driver we expect to change, so?
Correct.
Excuse me. Okay, budget items. We'll walk through the various budget items and the open questions. Pick a preliminary position so we can lay in the full budget, you know, um, numbers to make some whatever directional changes we need to at the next meetings. Would be good. Should we go down the list, Brian, or do you have them in any particular order? Because I know you've been working on cataloging and updating and marking, but we can go down through them unless you have them in a certain order that would make it easier.
I don't have them in a particular order, did you want to go every adjustment, or just the ones that were in memos?
Give me, give me, give me one that's
So we could
It's every not in a memo.
For instance, in, um, accounting, there was a request for, I believe, seven thousand dollars to allow for additional staffing.
Which was in a narrative, not in a memo, not in the budget.
I'm navigating back to accounting. Check.
Okay.
Request did include that.
So that's some of it, too, I think we probably have to go back and look at some of those, because that was not the direction, so it's gonna be just so that we're actually, you know, apples to apples as we're going through and deciding those, those staff request changes or additional hour request changes.
Keep forgetting you can't see the narrative on, uh, step two.
Right.
Seven thousand.
So? Those are gonna be more difficult to tease out, obviously, because they're not on memo, and they're not in it, I mean, they're not they're in the budget but not separate, right?
Would that be helpful if I went through every department and pulled out anything like that?
I mean, it wasn't supposed to be that way, so you did not have to.
I mean, I hate to say it, but yes, it's very hard seeing what, using Zobrio, it's, I've struggled to see like what things need to be adjusted, or what those, I mean, I've tried to take notes, but, yeah. I'm sorry, I know it'll be a pain, but?
So my recollection, and I, you will tell me if you disagree with this, and I'll, I'll go through every department to double check it. Accounting was one, police had a question about part-time wages.
Yep, that was sixteen, I believe, was that what we?
Well, you all discussed whether it should be sixteen.
Right. Okay, I'm gonna propose we talk about it starting at sixteen and then decide what we do from there, unless anybody disagrees.
So I will highlight that, there was, um, on the library, there was a request, it's not in the budget, it's in the memo, to adjust by eleven thousand dollars.
But that, that's not a staffing one, these other ones have been staffing.
That's not staffing, that was just on the operating side.
Right. Driven primarily by prior
Year shortfall's just never been addressed, it's been just
Correct.
Covered by omnibus, but not addressed.
Right.
Fire included the staffing request.
Fifty, fifty-seven?
In terms of decreases that I have put into the budget requests, into the review, sorry?
Before you go to that, any other staffing adjustments?
The only one that Jackie and I were having a conversation about, and this is maybe a conversation that she needs to check in with the assessors. Her initial budget request included some overlap in staffing, it sounded like to March. Sounds like that's been revised to December thirty-first. So there may be additional capacity in that budget request that may be able to be adjusted downward.
Backward.
Correct.
To December.
Correct.
Forward to December.
Not forward, backwards. So it was a March twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And it's been backed up, it sounds like, to December thirty-first of twenty-five, is that your understanding?
It is my understanding, it depends on
There's many factors.
What overlap is needed and
But that may be in another place that it was in the budget, it could come down a little bit.
Okay. But that was included, do we have a number on that?
That was already factored into the actual Zobrio request.
That's what I'm saying, but they weren't staffing adjustments weren't supposed to be, so I'm just trying to, so we can do the apples to apples on what's
I'm gonna just see if it was called out in the narrative.
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing the same thing, if you're working on something else. I just pulled, not the most recent memo from Chief Wonka, but the older, the narrative was fifty-eight for his, his original narrative.
What did we settle on for PD?
Sixteen. Looks like ninety-nine seventy. And then
No, no.
Must be
New principal, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Not the clerk. It's not clear on how to tease it out, so I'll need to sit down with the assessors.
I'm glad I'm not the only one, I read that narrative going, I'm not sure.
I'll sit down with the assessors and we'll figure that out.
I mean, they submit, they should be able to just get you the number, too.
I'm sure they can. Those are the only staffing pieces that I recall.
It looks like, at least in the, and of course, this includes some adjustments, the salary and wage number year over year in the assessing budget went from it's like the, the budget this year is seventy-two, if I'm reading that right, seventy-two and change, and the request is one oh eight five, so it's thirty-six and change. And obviously, some of that is the two and a half percent in steps and stuff, but the majority of that is the overlap, we'll assume.
That was, that was budging to have two principal assessors for the training and overlap portion.
So it's probably thirty plus in there?
Right.
At least as a placeholder, it's not perfect, but it goes.
Do you want me to recap some of the decreases?
Is there any other staff adjustments, anyone, or requests that anyone recalls?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. No, I'm not hearing any, and I don't recall any, so we'll start there, okay?
EMS came down about fifty-one thousand, and that was based on the refined assessments from Orange and Northfield. So those are reflected now in Zobrio in Adjustment One.
These adjustments are in Phase One or Phase Two? Or should they show in both?
The ones that I've been putting in, I'm making them in Phase One, or Phase Two, excuse me.
Phase Two.
In the recommended adjustment column.
In the first one?
Correct, and I'm making a note explaining why.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I lost my place, oh, there will be, there is an adjustment made for Waste Water. There was just a mathematical error, so the, the wages were in there, and then the benefit time was also in there. But the benefit time needed to be reduced from the permanent salary and wage. So it was in effect, the benefit time was counted twice, so that has been reduced to reflect that correctly.
That was the, how much was it? Do you have a number?
Probably fifty-something. Let's double check my math before this, it's fifty thousand five hundred and nine dollars.
I remember it being like, showing a very significant increase, and it didn't make sense, so?
It did not make sense, and I kept looking at it until we found it, yep. So that's been adjusted now. As I noted, there's a request to increase library ordinary maintenance by eleven, um, and change, so we need to look at that. And I don't recall any other specific
Health insurance?
Thank you for that, I put it in as fifty thousand dollars increase, that was the recommendation from the treasurer.
I think that needs more review.
It may, but at least I put her recommendation into recommended Adjustment One, just as a starting part for your conversation.
Maybe I should say that needs review, I don't think we really talked about it at any length, we just got the memo, so? Sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I know we have, we run into this every year, we have some budget, we have some budgets that lovelily funded, regardless of any type of electrical increases, things like that, they lovelily funded. Then we have budgets who didn't do that, then we have budgets who actually added to their budget, and so I guess I, I'm just curious, how are we acknowledging that, or dealing with that, or working with that, or? I think it's, I don't want to use the word unfair, but if we have a department that found a way to consume, you know, fuel costs, electrical costs within their operating budget, and, you know, didn't make that increase, and then you have a department that said, nope, here's my fuel costs, here's my operating, here's my, you know, these costs, and they are it, it feels like it's a different plan of attack for different departments, and I really am struggling with that.
Fair, it's few that had that issue? Most did exactly what was asked of them and tried to put their request for any additional consideration into the narrative like you asked for. There were a few departments, and I'll use solid waste as an example. That one did go up. It was either based on contractual obligations or the PFAS issue that we've been working through, and that's under DEP directive. And there's no... Nothing else in that budget to decrease, right?
That may not be the best budget to use then as an example, because I'm talking like everyday...
Right.
School, highway, wastewater, water.
Most of them all followed your... The request from both boards. There are a few outliers, and that's... That is fair. And I... So what I can do is I can call attention to that, so like a matrix where the request is.
So are we... Are we talking about talking about those tonight or just finding those and talking about them in the future?
I don't think we're prepared to talk about it tonight.
Okay. I'm just wondering. I mean, I'm clicking through and although it took me a minute to get there, I think we can collapse down to like the some categories in each budget and see what the change year over year is and identify if it looks like it's mostly wage adjustments, and if it is, does it seem within the guidance, or is it, you know, more? And, for example, you know, the town accountant budget has the wage adjustment, which is, you know, more than obviously what you identified, but then it also has five thousand in expenses. That's an increase year over year, which it says it's a financial audit, single audit, and GSP audits, so change in audit requirements. Which isn't level funded, but again, it's... I don't know if it can be absorbed or not, but that's... Those are the kind of things you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Maybe I misunderstood, and I know we had, you know, polite difference of opinion, but it was my understanding people would in general submit a level budget, find... Try to find some way to absorb into their budget any increased costs. But if they couldn't, they would put in a narrative of here are the things, whether it's electricity or fuel or whatever it is, that, you know, here's our level budget. We really need this. If we vote this, our budgets currently are going over, so we're just playing games with the words and we're gonna need the money from somewhere, so what do you do?
Right.
I think I understood that way.
Right, in the narrative, not in the budget submission. And what we have is some submissions where the dollars are in the budget, some where they're in the narrative, and some where they're both partially in the narrative, partially in the budget, maybe the same amounts, maybe not, right? So we've got like four variations, and so for... I mean, I was saying it about staffing, but I think it's across the whole board, right, to say, okay, all of the adjustments are here or here or here, so we can clearly do apples to apples down the list. They're not. They're in four different places, maybe under in that jar, maybe over here on the table. So I think that's the challenge. Right now, we're sitting here not being able to just scroll down and going, they're all level and the only adjustments are what we said to do, which is the two and a half percent or two percent plus the any required steps. And everything else is just in memos and narratives, or it's just in the submissions, or just some clarity, right? I think that's the challenge, so... So we don't miss them, because we don't wanna miss them, but also that we can, you know, accurately compare what the requests are and make the decisions from there. So we're... We've talked about a few of them. I'm sure it's not all of them. Is he asked to get all these kind of in one table and try to get them adjusted? We could.
Yeah, I think so.
Where does it make sense to see these? Do you wanna see them in Zobrio in the tally, like in the change columns, or do you want them all in a spreadsheet and separate? I just wanted to get into one place, and I don't know what's easier for Brian or what is easier for the group.
Which is easier for him.
I would defer to what's easier to Brian.
Spreadsheet at this point would be easier.
Yep.
I asked the question. That's fair.
I mean, it's my preference for Zobrio so that you all have access to it, because you can log in whenever you want and see this. But if this is gonna be for next Monday, then me doing it in a spreadsheet and putting it in a memo to you all is probably much quicker. And then if you all want to make those changes at the next meeting, I can put them into Column Two or whatever you want for your budget review.
So you've put some into One, which is not the review column, so you've put them in under the initial, is what you were saying before?
So you have... In the review section, it expands out to Three?
When you go to Phase Two.
You go to Phase Two.
Yeah.
Yes. So I've just been putting them in.
So you put them in Stage Two, not Stage One. You put them in the first column in Stage Two.
Correct.
Because that was where I was confused.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was looking at stage two.
Because I thought you said there's Stage One, Column One, but I was confused.
Yeah, no. I've only ever seen his memos on Stage Two right now.
Okay.
Okay. So for clarification, just because Stage Two, Phase whatever is, if we're going in and we're not changing to Stage Two, then there is a chance we're missing information at this point. So when we log in, we should log in and then change to Stage Two to see the most up-to-date and accurate.
I could... I can ask the software company if there's a way to default it to Stage Two, so you just see it when you log in at this point. The only thing you won't be able to easily get to is the narratives that have been uploaded, because those only exist on Stage One. But correct. There's... Now that we're in the review phase, all the notes for any suggested recommendations are gonna be there. One other option for you all, if you scroll all the way down to the very bottom, there's the reporting section, and if you go into the folder called Shared with My Group, there's different reports I've created, and it's by subgroup, or it's the full operating budget. And I've been trying to go through and modify those to show what the recommended edits would be or the adjustments would be with any justification notes. So if that's a quick way for you to look at it as well, you could also take a look at those reports.
Okay.
And if you prefer to build your own report, I can show you how to do that, so that if there was a way that you wanna see the data, you can organize the columns in a way that makes sense for you.
I can't even find Stage Two yet, so...
In the top menu bar on the right, it says...
It's fine. I'm good. I'm good.
Stage One, Stage Two.
Because I'm happy to help anybody with that. Okay. So you want that for your next meeting?
So you're gonna extract all the changes that are in there, plus any that you made, plus the memos, and put them all together in one separate from Zobrio then, is what you said?
I'm going to go through and summarize anything that's not currently in Zobrio, and I'm going to export a report out of Zobrio for the rest that is in Zobrio.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Got it.
It will be in Excel, and we can shape it however we want at that point.
At that point, you won't know what's in or out. Well, you'll have a note of what was already in, what wasn't, but we can at least compare apples to apples and know what's already built in and what is not.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And you'll identify that, because you're not backfilling, so if we're looking into Zobrio, we'll know where we're comparing.
Correct.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you. And then solar... So revenues or whatever, prior year for the library, something that you were getting?
I will get the total on that.
I just wanna see as a comparative kind of to the operating cost changes and understand is that... How does that offset or compare to that? Because we can't direct it, obviously, but it is related.
Other things with the operating budget? Any other questions, items, open items? Any not-known assessments outstanding? We have all the numbers from everybody, finals? We don't have the final from tech yet, right?
Yes.
We do have final from tech, or we do not?
Tech's done. Cog's in, solid waste district's in, retirement's in, ammo shelter is in.
So they adopted their number? Those are the right numbers now at tech?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, everything's done.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no other questions on operating, then annual town meeting draft?
Right. It's mostly empty at this point.
We have nothing to bring up?
It's the template. I didn't put numbers on there, because I wanted you to start having this conversation, to see where you wanted me to start entering numbers. Scott brought up a question that I raised in the draft. Trying to get my document back up in front of me. Last year on the water and wastewater enterprise fund articles, we changed the format slightly. And looking at this year and thinking about this capital conversation made me reconsider how we approach that, and I wondered whether or not you wanted to recommend to the voters a certain amount to be raised specifically for capital with the potential that we could have it raised and directly deposited into... The article could authorize the treasurer to transfer that amount of money into a stabilization fund created for this purpose.
You're talking about the enterprise stabilization?
Correct. So in wastewater, if you are making this up, you said ten thousand dollars was to be appropriated for the enterprise fund for the wastewater system. The ten thousand dollars would be identified, approved by the voters. It could then just be transferred into this trust fund and start earning its interest, and then be available as a source to recommend for improvements on the wastewater. Same thing could be done in the article for the water system. I don't think it's anything different than trying to budget with a surplus in hopes of having additional capacity and retained earnings that would then be used for capital. If anything, it'd be a little more formal and a little more intentional. I think it would actually be a lot more, you know, transparent towards the voters about the intended purpose of that funding. It would also remind us, just from an accounting perspective, what we're trying to accomplish, you know, much to the conversation you all were having earlier today. It would change how much you have to raise and appropriate, but I don't know that that's necessarily a bad thing. I know from DEP's perspective, they wanna make sure that all the water and wastewater systems have a capital plan. That's the AMP that we kept talking about earlier, the asset management plan. That's all part of that overall capital planning process, and those projects come with price tags, and the state's gonna wanna make sure that there is a funding source that the local operators are identifying to fund those projects.
Am I correct when something goes into the enterprise fund stabilization fund, that it also requires a two-thirds vote to take it out?
It's a great question. I need to double-check with council on that. That is the generic model for the general stabilization fund. There was a question and a proposed legal change, and I don't know if it fully went through the legislature, but the intention for a special purpose stabilization fund, say wastewater, that only capital projects for wastewater would be funded out of that, would only need a majority vote, because the voters had already created it with a very specific finite purpose, and it can only be used for that. So that may have passed, so those may be majority at this point. General stabilization is absolutely a two-thirds.
I asked the question so that folks watching understand, when... It seems like these stabilization accounts are getting more and more of them, and they have substantial amounts of money in them. When they vote to put money into at least the general stabilization of capital planning stabilization, they're voting to have more control of what happens to their money.
Agreed.
Because it takes fifty percent plus one to put it in, but two-thirds to take it out.
Agreed.
So it's not just sitting over there for us to do whatever we want with. They have more control of what happens with their money.
Agreed.
Which I would think most would like that.
The other reason that I was recommending that you all consider this, and it came up, I feel like I knew something that others didn't. We were in a Department of Revenue conversation, and there was a conversation another town had about having these already set up. But right now, relying on the retained earnings means that we have to wait till it's certified every year. And if that's November, January, somewhere in that timeframe each year, that means there's, you know, four to six months where you all and the voters do not have access to that funding. So if there was a capital need for either of those departments, if that's your funding source, you can't touch it until the certification's complete. And luckily, we haven't had those issues that we couldn't support during our existing operating budget. But I don't know that long-term that that's the best with aging infrastructure, if that's the best strategic move. Having it in stabilization means the voters would have ready access to it when they need it.
So there's two parts to that. One is a recommendation from capital on what we would potentially contemplate moving into establish capital stabilization with the existing retained earnings balance. And then the other part, which Brian was describing of, is there a number every year that maybe we're trying to get toward or a percentage to deposit in to build that, to get towards our two-hundred percent reserve policy, or whatever the target may need to be? So two different things. One is what we already have. There's, you know, money there. Beyond the two-thirds question, within the dedicated enterprise fund capital stabilization, is also any other difference between how we can... What it takes and how we can use what would be in a capital stabilization within and is just retained earnings to help inform what we leave behind in retained earnings and not move into capital? Like, what is the benefit of not moving all of it? If it's only a fifty, you know, fifty-one percent, regardless, then no matter what the cost was, if everybody voted for it, whether it was in capital or in just retained earnings, once certified, is there any difference? For the other six months when it's not certified, obviously the capital stabilization's useful, but I just don't... We don't have any... That I'm aware of, any good understanding of what does retained earnings... How can we use retained earnings in a different way, easier, or are there other ways to access it? And I don't believe there are. I think the only difference is gonna be the vote, and that one has a dedicated purpose and the other one has a general dedicated purpose.
Is it... To your... Back to your point about it being a dedicated purpose, saying water, wastewater, that's kind of broad. Like, to me, a dedicated purpose would be the tunnel improvement. So is it that specific, that it has to be like a specific project to not do the two-thirds vote, or is it...
The way it was explained to me, again, if this has passed, that if we have defined and the voters have approved a very specific scope, that's special enough. Like, if it was just generally capital improvements townwide, that would still need the two-thirds.
Okay.
But if we specifically said this was for water department operating, or not operating, capital improvements, that that would be specific enough. To your point, there's a lot of... There's a lot of variety of projects that would probably fall into there. And maybe you still, as a practice, still say two-thirds is what you want, and that's completely fine.
But our other capital cover is every department possible.
Correct.
More general than just one department, right? So those are the questions that we'd like, just if there's any other information when you're asking.
The only other media thought I have to what you just asked is that the investment strategies for both of those funds are different, and so the investment income that's earned on both of those is likely different. So I can try to understand what that is.
That'd be great, to get that opinion from the treasurer.
Also, I'd like to hear from the department head as to what they feel they should be putting in... What... Not that they should be putting in there, but what they would recommend as an amount, whether it's an amount or a percentage, that they think would be sufficient yearly to deposit in there. I do think this is one of those areas where it is an account or counts for such specific departments, that getting a little bit of feedback from that department head as to what their idea would be would be helpful.
On an ongoing basis or from the existing?
Um, I would say, you know, both. What they think that they usually kind of seed the account with, and then what they would recommend potentially putting in there on an annual basis. I think they have the best idea long-term of what kind of projects they might have coming up, and what kind of funding they might need or be looking for. So I... At least for me, I feel like that would be helpful information.
Would you like to have them at the capital meeting to give that recommendation, if we're gonna talk about it this week?
Is there enough time to get them to it?
I don't know. There's enough time to ask?
Yep. Certainly ask.
Ask them. Okay. So just running through them, is there any that anyone has questions about or anything that we, you know, directionally, do we think we wanna put them on or not? I think the capital improvement plan and fund around stabilizations is an open one, so if we come to a point where we're ready to and wanna move forward with it. The Knoxbox key system by law?
Well, I was just gonna say, I wanna, before we move on to that, under the capital planning for those two, we ran into this, and you mentioned this last time, we ran into the funding, so it's trying to do them simultaneously can be problematic. So this year, I thought the recommendation would be just to establish and not to try and seed it at the same time, because we ran into DOR issues in doing that, and it doesn't get certified properly, and then you have to take a secondary vote to reauthorize it. So keeping it blank of a seeding, and if we're... If the concept is that we wanna seed it, start that for the next fiscal year in '27.
Right.
Create it in this year. Or not, you know, or even later on in '26, but once it's established, add a special or something, do it then.
Yeah, once it's certified, again.
I think the open question was, whether or not if it was a percentage or something like that, if we could set the language for after it was certified.
Okay.
Right? Was it open question, could we say, okay, establish this, and then once certified, deposit ninety percent retained earnings in, or something that was not...
Fair enough.
That was...
Not trying to work it into this ATM.
Before July 1, before it's established.
I'll ask council. I just know that we attempted to do it all in one motion and that DOR was not satisfied with that.
No.
Or can we, because we have more time to establish it before, if we establish it now and not on July 1?
Right.
Questions about how can we do it?
Correct.
Knox Box key system by law? Any concerns?
None.
Move it forward?
Okay, to put that one in?
ATM draft?
Yep.
The unspent capital stabilization article closure back to, or into capital stabilization? These are all ones that were not allocated from, correct? All of these projects were not funded from capital stabilization, so they have to be directed back or directed to go there?
They were, but their language doesn't, the language in the vote didn't exist that closing it returns it to?
That's my question.
We've been starting to add that language into the articles going forward.
None of these had that?
Correct. So I think going forward, we'll be able to phase this action out. But right now, this would all close out to free cash, so.
Concerns, questions with any of those?
I think they're all there.
Should I, should I include this article in the draft too?
Yes.
Capital would appreciate that.
The FERCOG charter amendment?
Yeah.
Has everyone had a chance to read that? Questions on it? Like more time to digest it? Or we decide if we're ready to incorporate it or want to?
Having sat through the discussion when they went over at the FERCOG meeting, it's a, there's a lot of sweeping changes on it, but it's also hasn't been adjusted since its inception.
1995 or '96.
It's been a while. And, you know, in, in listening to the executive board talk about it at FERCOG, the changes were, when they first put up the document in the '90s, it was a very quick writing of that document in order to get the legislation enacted and get it done before they abolished the entire county government. So they, you know, self-reported, said this document should have been amended in 1996 or '97 immediately after adoption. And it just sort of got, we'll get to it, we'll get to it, we'll get to it. So there was a lengthy discussion back and forth about that, about the proposed changes in there. But overwhelmingly, it was voted to approve it and move it forward to the member towns.
Was Jay DePucchio part of that? Was he there, part of that discussion?
Yep.
He was part of writing the original too.
Lot of input.
Yeah.
Is there additional information that folks would like on that? There was a longer presentation that I can forward out to everybody as well. Absolutely. Okay.
There's seven or eight bullets, kind of breaking over to the bottom of page one to two is the, having sat through it, is it a good summary of the key stuff, right?
It is. It captures the, the essence of.
The major shifts.
Yep.
Any other questions about it or information needed?
I don't, not for myself.
One, only one question I have was, and maybe just get it out of that, is like how, so they're reversing the process on how this started. Town meeting votes first, if they get two-thirds, then legislative actions to align it?
Correct.
When does it go into effect officially? When both are complete?
Yeah, it can't go into effect until it's actually adopted, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Could be a multi-year process to get.
Two-thirds of each member and two-thirds of full membership.
Right. And I think that's what they were concerned about, to your point, it can take two years to get special legislation through. So if they file now, it's next December, and, and they find out it goes through, then they turn around to the towns. If the towns haven't agreed to this, then that doesn't go into effect. So they would much rather start with the towns.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And make sure the towns are on board.
Right.
It's actually quicker, although it wouldn't seem like it.
That side of it.
Correct. This is a long process no matter what you do.
Right.
I think they did it the last way to select my master actually point, just with the speed with which the county was dissolving and needing original planning agency, they quickly went through the special legislation process and then focused on the membership afterwards.
Right.
And 27 years later, it doesn't make sense to do it that way, so.
I know we're waiting on a request, a formal request and recommendation from the historical commission about that potential, because those are changes to structure and.
That'd be by law changes?
At least for the historical commission.
Do you want me to draft language just as placeholders?
I mean, only if you're expecting that we'll hear it in time. If you don't, then I don't know that you want to go through drafting it until we have it. Okay, recommended.
The, I can send them a correspondence today.
You can replace Article 21 with that one.
Got it.
Well, you have, on the ATM, it's the adoption of the MGL for the school, which I believe only has to happen one time. We did that last year, didn't we?
No, this is new.
That's a different one. This is just set out of.
Thought we did that last year.
We did the special stabilization or whatever it was for special education, I believe.
Yep, yes. I stand corrected, thank you. But you're right, once this is done, we will not have to do it again.
Anything going through the draft, any questions or any other items? Most of them are our standard occurring articles.
Missing it or not seeing it? What one or, I know finance committee and capital probably have nothing to do with it, but for historical?
It's not in there.
Oh, okay, that would be why. Okay, perfect.
There was some discussion about reducing the request from historical to reduce the membership from structure from seven to five of the historical commission and then potentially create like a, I'm going to, like a language of museum care.
Yep, Pearlby.
Pearlby, it could be Pearlby or just a historical museum care committee or group. And whether that's established or appointed by the board, or established by the board or established by a bylaw, I think those are options.
Okay.
And tease those to focus.
Separate them?
Separate them, tease them out.
Because it's so broad and.
Just being nosey.
We have to reduce one because we have half, we have less people because we're splitting into two, two groups than the seven that quorum is hard.
Got it, okay.
From a financial standpoint, with the new chart of accounts, we broke the two functions, even though they're overseeing both, into two different departmental areas. So this year, we're already tracking their expenses separately.
Okay.
And there was something way back that was specific to the museum that was.
It was the historic society, the society.
Society, there we go. That was not town, it was townspeople, not a town, yeah, not a town function or townspeople function or nonprofit.
So, you know, it jogged my memory, but when we had that conversation, going back to the appropriation for capital stabilization fund, the reverting back to capital stabilization, the Pearlby Care Museum is on there for 36, it's been on there for years and hasn't been expended. But with the potential for creating a new committee that could have access to that, I mean, it's a small amount, it's 3,600. Would it make sense to leave that for one more year in case we establish that group and they have a function and a charge and need some small funds to continue that work?
They have operating funds, right? They have an operating budget funds. $14,000.
These were capital for specific improvements, which I think they have to go back through and kind of fresh look and put fresh requests, right? Think, I mean, I don't think. Unless, unless they fall within the scope of what the original capital was, if it didn't get done to.
Well, I'm guessing this is probably, I don't recall exactly what we did for Pearlby Care, and I'm guessing, given that amount, it had to have been a much higher amount than that, because 3,600 wouldn't, so this has got to be like a remaining balance or something.
Roof project, or there's this.
Or was it asbestos removal maybe?
No, this, this dates back to before I got here, to 2015, 2016.
Yeah, I'll retract that. And if it's that old, I knew it was old when we discussed it the first time, but I wasn't sure what the language was for what the specific focus of that fund was. But if it was really honed down and narrow, then it makes no sense to keep it because you're limiting yourself anyways.
There's definitely capital things that they will need, and we've heard about some of them.
Yes, and that's where my mind went, but we'll have to reestablish them. Yeah, we'll have to reestablish those later.
So one of my concerns is last year, they had asked for $10,000 in capital, and I believe it was specific to the Pearlby Care building. And we had said, just put it back into the operating budget. And at least my understanding was that money was $10,000 specifically to the Pearlby Care building operating budget. And so I would just want to make sure, because I know we talked about it last time and it was, it just went to general.
And it's in there, it's in the museum's budget.
It is.
There's $14,000.
Can you repeat that? The $10,000 in capital was going to their operating budget?
We, what they were asking for was $10,000, but it was a whole bunch of smaller things.
Yes, the request, I'm sorry.
And so when we reviewed it, we said very much, this is much more of a maintenance line rather than a one true capital project. But I thought when I had asked about it before, the answer was it went to kind of a general buildings and maintenance fund, not specific to them. So especially if they're splitting things out, I would want to make sure, because our intent was that that was to them specifically.
So, I think it just got lost in the explanation. So until last year, the maintenance, fuel, electricity costs were all attributed to town buildings, that sort of larger general pot. With the new chart of accounts and the request from finance to have things tracked in their operating budget, they received their own operating budget. We don't have a great accounting of what those past costs were. The building's been winterized for several years. So trying to tease that out to an open operational cost is more speculation than anything. So we used a $14,000 budget proposal for this year. We're tracking what their actuals are for this year. It's still partially winterized or mostly winterized. So it's still probably not a perfect representation of what it costs to operate it. And then going forward, you will continue to just see that budget.
Okay.
So.
But that's what was teased out as a general. Does that incorporate the additional 10 for improvements and maintenance and things that was allocated?
There was never an additional $10,000.
There was supposed to be, that's your point, right?
Our capital request was supposed to convert from a capital request to being, just like we have with other departments where they've come forward. And I'm trying to think, I can't think of an example right now, where they have put something capital forward, we said, no, that very much is maintenance, so that should go into your departmental budget. And so then in that year, we'll see their departmental budget increase by that dollar amount. That was at least my understanding of the intent with that $10,000 that they had requested for maintenance items.
See, you want them to have a $24,000 operating budget?
Well, at the time it was presented that they were actively working and had things planned for the building, the problem was nothing that they had planned met the level of capital.
Right.
And so our thought was to make sure that they had, so they could do those things, so they could start to work on the building,
Right.
was that that $10,000 went into their account or their department.
I'll be honest with you, I don't think they're going to spend what you appropriated for them.
And that's fine.
I hope they do, but.
And that's totally fine.
But I do think you're going to have money returned at the end of the year.
Okay.
If, if you want them for FY '26 to have an increased appropriation, we can definitely work on a scenario that includes that. I, I don't know.
It's, it sounds like it's a new group, new people, new faces, and so I'm totally fine with doing it. I think it was just a miscommunication last year of what we were expecting.
Right.
So I'm totally fine with moving forward, and then obviously if they have capital or what have you, go through the process from there.
And make sure that we bring all of that to you all.
Yep.
Absolutely.
If I remember correctly though, Deb, it was, they were here, they asked for it. We discussed that it didn't really conform to a capital request. And I think the select board said that they had enough money in their account and that ended it. So they never got it.
Except they never had any, exactly. Well, I don't know if we said that, but they didn't have any back then, so it doesn't, yeah. I think what I was trying to tease out the separation of is, one is, they have operating costs that they've always had that have been embedded in town buildings.
Right.
That we broke out now and have their own budget.
Correct.
There was an additional $10,000 for maintenance and repairs and small things they're trying to do that they had summed into a capital request that the direction was, it's not really a capital request, it's really a lot of maintenance. So let's add that to your operating budget so you have it to do maintenance. So whatever their operational cost plus 10 is what the expected number should be this year. Now, sounds like you're saying regardless of whether those are accurate or not, it's plenty. I think we can always revisit if they need money and come back now.
I paid the electric bill today and it was under 20 bucks. So I think.
Was that the bill to get the bill?
Yeah, I think so.
It's a bill for printing bill?
So, yes.
Other, anything else on the ATM draft?
I'll make those revisions, and then I will get you the other information so you can consider the other options.
Did this incorporate all the items that we had for the STM that were not?
Yes.
Takings to the bridge?
Yes. Bills of a prior year.
Yeah, I saw that one.
I'll plug those numbers in now. The school request, and then there was the request that was discussed way back in December, which was the request to transfer the remaining balance of the feasibility project for Public Works into the modular office purchase of Public Works.
That was like the 80,000.
Yep, that was the other, yep. Double it or whatever.
Yep. So those are, those were the only other three articles that were on that draft this TM.
Okay. Are there any open bylaws or items that we deferred during town code to adopt later?
Yes.
Okay, so, again, I don't know if they need to be, obviously we don't have them on here yet.
I can put them forward.
If they're ready.
The big one that you, you skipped over was the personnel one that was going to update the Pearlby and how personnel is handled. We had a whole proposed bylaw. So that, that one has been sitting in draft.
We started to have a conversation with that.
Yep, I remember.
I don't think we finalized anything since you and I met.
It was pretty close.
Yeah.
So, so that is, that is an open item.
And then we had a prior year one on snow, on parking ban during snow.
That was voted down at town meeting.
But there was some guidance and some talk about coming back to it because of the, you know, reviewing the items that were of concern and potentially bringing it back, so.
Yeah, can bring back anything you want to look at.
Doesn't mean that we're ready to, it's something out there.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else for the drawing, anything else at all? Motion?
Motion to.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, well with that, thank you all. Have a good evening.